If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the public comment section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Well, good afternoon and welcome to the March 12th County Commission Meeting. Could we please have Samantha Nazario? Are you giving the invocation today, or have I completely missed that? We could all pray, it'd probably be good.
My dear sir, Pastor Almeida.
Now, here's what was on the thing. Ah, see there, 75 years old, you just can't do it. Anyway, the invocation for tonight is Pastor Lucas Almeida. Ah ha, there you are. I just wanted to give you a little bit more time to think about your prayer.
Pray about my prayer?
Yep, there you go.
Let's pray. Lord, I pray unto you, the triune God of the universe, who alone has immortality, who reigns through Christ far above all rule and authority and power and dominion and above every name that is named, not only in this age but also in the ones to come. Lord, I recognize your power today, but also recognize your wisdom. Appointing government to extend your purposes on earth, one of the ways you have determined that your will might be done on earth is through the leadership of civil magistrates. Father, I pray today for the Brevard body. Board of County Commissioners, I thank you for this body of servants present here. I pray that they would be greatly blessed, and I pray that they would come together to make decisions on our behalf that are beneficial and benevolent for our county. Lord, whether they fear you or not, you tell us that there's no authority that is given to men that does not first come from you. I pray that they might know this today. I pray that they would know the source of power and the source of life that is found in your son, Jesus Christ. Who though he was in the form of God did not count equality with God, a thing to be grasped, but emptied himself by taking on the form of a servant, being born in the likeness of man, and being found in a human form, he humbled himself by becoming obedient to the point of death, even death on the cross. Lord, your son is the model of servant leadership. He is mighty and yet humble, he is Lord and yet obedient, he offers life through his own death, cursed death on a cross, taking on the punishment not of his own sin, but of those who trust in him. And Father, through death, through Jesus' death, death died, and when death dies, all things live. I'm thankful for a faith that is interested in human flourishing. I pray that this body would share this conviction, the upholding of human dignity, the sanctity of the human life from moon to tomb, the free exercise of religion, the care for the poor, the widow, and the orphan. Father, I pray for Brevard County, that this county would be known as a county where the rights that were first endowed to us by our Creator are protected and promoted by the governing authorities. I pray that Brevard County would know that there is a God in heaven who loves his creation and who is willing to save and redeem all who will come to him through Jesus Christ. I pray, Lord, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Call to order, and if would all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Tom Grant.
Pledge of Allegiance. St. Louis, United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like a motion, please, to approve the minutes of January 23rd, 2024 regular meeting, February 1st, 2024 zoning meeting, and February 6th, 2024 regular meeting.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second by Commissioner Tobias? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Resolution, awards, and presentations. I would assume that all of you lovely ladies in the red are here for the Bleeding Disorder. Is that correct? No? All right. I am grateful, because normally I thought they were going to come get my blood tonight. If you're a public official, that can happen very easily. So, I have a resolution for the Bleeding Disorder. Who is the head of that wonderful organization? Come on up here, just stand right there. Yeah, yeah, all right. We're just, we're just gonna have you stand there, we're just gonna have you stand there.
Sir, that's for the next, no, 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 not yet.
All right.
Not yet, not yet.
I, I told you, I told you my cognitive abilities are going down the tubes there, so, all right. Is there somebody from the organization, the Bleeding Disorder Organization here? Maybe there's one of your other folks are, okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read this resolution. Whereas bleeding disorders that include hemophilia, von Willebrand disease are rare bleeding disorders, are characterized by blood not clotting normally due to the lack of clotting proteins, also known as clotting factors. And whereas in the United States, more than 20,000 individuals live with hemophilia and rare bleeding disorders, with 6,000 of them living in states of Florida, and one-half percent of the American population having von Willebrand disease. And while treatment can help, the conditions are not yet curable. Whereas symptoms of bleeding disorders include unexplained and excessive bleeding, large or deep bruising, nose bleeds, and bleeding into joints, muscles, and soft tissues. And if someone has a bleeding disorder, they may have an extended bleeding with insent dingents, such as inquiry, injury of the trauma, menstruation, surgery of dental procedures. And whereas the Bleeding Disorder Foundation of Florida founded in 1996 supports the bleeding disorder community throughout the state, and its mission is to improve the quality of life for people with the condition and their families through education, information, referral services, advocacy, support, and research, and annually hosts events throughout Florida to bring awareness to the community and needed funding for research and support service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does hereby proclaim the month of March as Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month, and encourages all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of these serious bleeding disorders. And thanks to healthcare professionals and Bleeding Disorder Foundation of Florida and the National Bleeding Disorders Foundation for their dedication and commitment to improving treatments and ultimately finding a cure. Do I hear a motion?
I'm moved to approve, sir.
One second.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. And now we have this lovely lady in front of us. What is your name, ma'am?
Samantha Nazario, and I'm with the Bleeding Disorder Foundation of Florida.
I knew darn good and well there was somebody by the name of Samantha out there. I thought you were gonna give us a prayer.
It's the first, I've been coming here for years, I've never seen the line that long, that's a good thing.
All right, there you go. Go ahead, Samantha.
Hi, are you guys, you guys passed the motion before or after I speak?
We've already, the motion's on the floor.
Okay. My name is Samantha Nazario, I'm a resident of Melbourne. This is our sixth year in partnership with our wonderful county commissioners here. Retired Commissioner Kurt Smith was the first one to ever bestow this proclamation upon us, and his predecessor, Commissioner Zanka, and now, thank you for District Four, we appreciate it. I'm here as a mother of a son with a bleeding disorder. My son Tyler is 24 years old, he's a student at Eastern Florida State College. Tyler's medication and medical costs for the year can be upwards of a half a million dollars to a million dollars a year. One dose of medication is $16,000. We were just in Washington, sorry, catching my breath here. Okay. We were just in Washington last week advocating for House Bill, this is what happens when you're running late, Senate Bill 228 here in the state of Florida. And last week, another one of our wonderful cosponsors and community supporters, Bill Posey, he is a cosponsor on House Bill 830 on the Florida, for the, excuse me, for the federal bill. The bill we're trying to pass is called the Help Co-pay Bill. What that bill does is it allows every dollar that comes out of your pocket to go towards your out-of-pocket for the year, instead of disappearing into what we call the insurance abyss. Everybody in this room, I'm sure, pays a co-pay if you have private insurance at one point or another. Well, what they've learned to do in 2018 was to circumvent the previous law that stated that every dollar out of your pocket went towards your out-of-pocket, and they decided to say, if it was any assistance from pharma or anything else of that nature, you're still gonna owe your out-of-pocket. So in our example, they would take my $25,000 worth of assistance, and in May, they'd tell me, you're still responsible for the $5,000 out-of-pocket. I'm lucky enough that Tyler is not severe, he has a mild von Willebrand disease, but in severe cases, their medication is $16,000 a dose, that can be two times a day, that could be three times, three times a day to seven times a week. That can be up to, as I said in the beginning, anywhere from a half a million to over a million dollars a year in medical coverage. Thanks to the ACA, children like my son and other patients are covered and are no longer uninsurable as they would have been in the past. What I ask everyone here is, if you do not know what a bleeding disorder is, you've never heard of it, please Google the Bleeding Disorder, Bleeding Disorder Foundation of Florida, or the National Bleeding Disorder Foundation, and educate yourself. One in 2% of the population of the United States of America is undiagnosed with a bleeding disorder, and does not know until it's entirely too late. Here in the state of Florida, we have 6,000 patients, and we do a Brevard County, called 433 of those patients called Brevard County Home, including administrators, staff, and lots of our kids here. So we definitely thank Brevard County for continuing their partnership with us, and we look forward to continuing this for as long as I can. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the board? Hearing none? There's no cards, I don't believe, right? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries. Now, we're gonna get all you lovely ladies up here to the front, it's part of the Bleeding Disorder.
I wish they're not here with me. I wish they were.
Okay, is there a bunch of, why are you guys trying to fool me tonight?
I don't know, but I'll take it.
Who coordinated the shirts? That's what I wanna know.
It's total happenstance.
We got two organizations with red shirts on tonight?
I think so.
Holy mackerel.
I have my son and my cousin with me, though.
See there? There you go. All right, we need a picture.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Yes, yes, you too.
John, no pressure here, right? Wait, hold on, hold on. Thank you.
All right, one more second.
Well, I can assure you, I'm putting on the next agenda, no more red shirts in this one.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck, baby. You look fabulous.
I'm gonna put on my dunce hat and sit back down, and then I'm gonna have my dear friend to the left, Commissioner Felton, to read the next resolution.
All right, so we have Surveyors and Mappers Week. Your turn.
I know.
I thought you said your turn.
No, it's all right.
Their turn.
That's all right, don't be confused.
Right, I'm gonna read the resolution, then we'll pass it, and then he'll invite you to make some comments, okay? Whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and it is a requirement in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction with its most familiar modern uses in the fields of transportation, building, and construction, communications, mapping, and the definition of legal boundaries for land ownership, and whereas George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, and other former presidents of the United States serve their fellow colonists as surveyors, and whereas the surveying and mapping profession requires special education, training, knowledge of mathematics, the related physical and applied sciences, and requirements of law for evidence, and whereas the continual advancements in instrumentation have required the surveyor and mapper not only to be able to understand and implement the methods of the past, but also to learn and employ modern technology in finding solutions to meet the challenges of the future. And whereas the citizens of Brevard County recognize the valuable contributions of the surveying and mapping profession to history, development, and quality of life in Florida and the United States of America, and make important decisions based on the knowledge and expertise of licensed surveyors and mappers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, in conjunction with National Surveyors Week, does hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through March 23rd, 2024, as Florida Surveyors and Mappers Week, and recognizes the many contributions and the ongoing dedication of our present-day surveyors and mappers to the citizens of Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 12th day of March 2024. And with that, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Felton, is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second by Commissioner Goodson and Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries. You gonna go down there with them, please?
I think you're gonna...
I just want to thank all the local surveyors in Brevard County for all the great work they do, supporting our community with all this new development happening for the past 30 years that I've been here. I also want to thank my staff, our staff, County Surveyor Mike Sweeney, Amber Holly, our vacating specialists, and all the other great people in our office. They always do a great job, and I can't wait for next year, and we'll do it all over again next year. Thank you.
All right, we have the proclamation for you, and we'll take a picture.
You go ahead.
Yep.
The party's about to start, anyway, with the red, the red...
Now, now he finally is going to read his own resolution today, this is good.
Okay.
All right.
And I'm glad I wore red today, like I said, it was an accident. I have a resolution acknowledging GFWC Vera Women's Club. We have Jan Gates, and all the ladies, you're welcome to come up as I read it.
Finally, we got to the red shirts. There you go. Wow, what a group. Hey, Matt Wallace, you're wearing a red shirt, aren't you part of this group? Ah ha, you're hiding back there, I see you. Now, who is going to be the spokesperson for this one?
Ms. Jan Gates.
There you go.
Okay. All right, I'll read the resolution, and then we'll pass it, and then he'll invite you to make some remarks. Okay. Whereas Brevard County proudly joins community members in celebrating 20 years of volunteer community service of the GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., on Monday, April 8th, 2024. And whereas GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., is a proud member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs with a mission to enhance the lives of others in Brevard County and surrounding communities through volunteer service. And whereas in December of 2003, 11 Vera women met and voted to establish the GFWC Vera Women's Club. In April of 2004, 23 paid members attended the Florida Federation of Women's Clubs Spring Convention, at which time the club was accepted into the Federation and subsequently incorporated in July 2005. And whereas GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., seeks to inspire community members to remember that community leaders can create global change through support of volunteerism, and whereas GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., participates and supports over 30 community causes in arts and culture, education and libraries, environment, civic engagement, health and wellness, and whereas GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., recognizes that acts of volunteering service holds tremendous power to transform lives and communities for the greater good of all, offering an opportunity to transcend boundaries and unite people, and whereas Brevard County recognizes GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., and its 20 years of positive influence for people across our community through volunteerism. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby designate April 8th, 2024, as Turn Compassion Into Action Day in Brevard County, and urges all citizens to join GFWC Vera Women's Club, Inc., to make this day a springboard for volunteerism awareness, raising activities, and support. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 12th day of March 2024. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Felton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right.
Jan?
Thank you, Commissioner Felton. We are honored and humbled to be receiving this resolution. Together with our community, we make a difference one in our action at a time, as we turn compassion into action. VWC has served Brevard County community for 20 years, with inspiring hard work, dedicated selfless groups of women, working together on a variety of community service projects and programs. Our members proudly utilize their time and talents to meet specific needs for numerous nonprofit organizations in Brevard County and beyond. In 2023, our club volunteered 13,364 hours. Our projects were 89, donated $29,318, in-kind donations was 9,282, along with past presidents and members. It is with sincere gratitude that I accept this on behalf of the GFWC Vera Women's Club. Thank you.
Okay, I have the proclamation, we'll take a picture.
I just want to say too, you guys are so beautiful, and it really makes my heart happy, I'm a female at this moment, so, thank you.
Don's a miracle worker.
You're having fun tonight, this is good. All right, so this is the only one on the consent agenda, maybe the people are not...
Okay.
Congratulations.
So, I appreciate it.
Okay.
She's one of the ones who just...
And you started it all.
Impressive organization. All right, we're gonna move on. Yeah, well, I figured out why Rob passed this resolution, he wanted to be down there with all the women. This is the perfect idea, there you go. We're not gonna tell Veronica about that, though. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody on the commission have any items they want to pull?
Yes, at 10, no without comment.
Any other ones that we need to talk about? All right, let's go to consent item number nine. And Sandra Sullivan has a card.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, my comment is about the county taking over, Parks and Rec taking over the zoo, zip line portion. And so, if you go to the property appraiser's site, and you search for that property, the zip line is within the property that is owned by the zoo. So, it's kind of a... the property that is owned by the zoo. So, it's kind of a curious thing. I'm kind of curious, but I just kind of wonder, have any of you ziplined in there? Because I have, okay? And you're literally ziplining, you know, over the monkeys and alligators, the different areas you could see the zoo. You're literally in the zoo. So, it'd be really nice to hear from you why we as taxpayers are taking over the running of a portion of the zoo. Because this is a really odd agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tabia.
If you read the item, it's pretty clear. It says linear park, and a zip line is a straight line. So I get where the misunderstanding is, but it's got nothing to do with the linear, with the zip lines that you request. If you'd have read a little bit further, you'd see that it's the walkway that is called linear park. So it is not anywhere near the, yes, you have a printout, but I'm gonna punt, I'm gonna punt this over...
Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan, please. Thank you.
To our Parks Director, where you will get the exact same information. I wouldn't mind taking over the zip line park. It's a money-making thing, but unfortunately, that's not it.
Mary Ellen?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments?
I'm here to answer any questions of the board.
Is, are, this transfer, will this be the linear park as it says in the outline, or will it be the zip line facility?
It is not the zip line facility. It is the linear park, 2.85 miles of the linear park.
Okay. Any other items that we need to pull? Item 10, I believe you wanted to speak about, Commissioner Tabia? Or did you want to...
I just voted no without comment on that one. I'll be more than willing to, but just quicker to vote no without comment.
Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you so much. Now we'll go to public hearings, G1. Request for public hearing, interest determination PID for the Marker 99 Restaurant, formerly known as Captain Kitana, to allow an approximately 122 square foot deck expansion exceeding of 30% impervious areas within a surface water protection buffer, and an exception to the National Resource Management Stormwater Management requiring District 4. Hello, are you going to talk about this?
Good evening. I'm here for any questions.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. A motion by Commissioner Felton, second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
To the clerk.
Pardon me?
Clarify something for the clerk.
Clarify for the clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to know who made the motion for consent.
Commissioner Fel, oh, for, oh, for the consent. Commissioner Felton.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, let's go to public hearing, G2. Petition to vacate Republic, Public Rightaways, Virginia Avenue and Maple Street, June Park Edition Number Three, Plot Book Four, Page 74, Melbourne, Andrew W. Pouchak, District Five. Mary Ann Houston, are you here?
Hi, I wanted to let you know that I'm not here alone. I have other community members here with me in the audience. I'm just the speaker for tonight. We are opposed to allowing this to happen because it is going to tear up private roads. It's going to interfere with the safety of our children in our neighborhood. We were not notified that this was something that was going to occur when we purchased in this neighborhood. So, we are a gated private street. We are paying for our roadway, our walkway, and this plot that they are going to have access to, they have the option to do well water. They also have the option to do septic, which would not require them to then tear into our roadway and disrupt our community. They also have an option of utilizing other means of getting access to this property, which I believe may be government property that they can access this property from, and these so-called paper roads that they can also utilize rather than coming through a private neighborhood. This is also a property that sits between two bodies of water, and it also houses a lot of wildlife. There have been eagles resting up there. We have gopher turtles that have been seen there, and also sandhill cranes. So, I would also ask that the board take into consideration to make sure that all of that is safe for our wildlife also. If there's any other questions from me, I would be happy to answer them.
No, ma'am. We're good.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Is there a motion, please?
What's your district? How do you feel about that question?
Oh, well, if you take the floor for a second, Commissioner Pritchett. Oh, Commissioner Goodson, before I do.
Could staff tell us what is the purpose of this, other than, you know, give us a better understanding of what you're trying to accomplish?
Yes, Commissioner. Good evening. So, this is a request to vacate that was by Mr. Pochock. So, from a staff perspective, we're just reviewing the vacate request and then proposing that to the board. This particular owner is looking to connect water sewer, and then ultimately annex the property into the city of West Melbourne. As noted, there are several objections, but there is an ingress and egress easement granted across the private roads by the developer, and this is not part of the plotted subdivision.
So if we do it, Chair?
Yes, sir.
If we do it, are you gonna put that all attached to the resolution to, that he has to do those things?
The resolution specific to the vacate.
Those will be, the comments you made will be in that resolution?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion? Yeah, go ahead. If, go ahead and take the floor for a second. Yes, I sat through the briefing on, in regards to this, and asked several questions, and I understand your concern, but apparently this lot was not included in the original subdivision in the first place. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
So it's kind of sitting out there in the middle of no place, and it needed to be done if he's gonna connect the sewer and water and all those other issues. So, that's my opinion, that's what I heard at the briefing, and I'm fine with it. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabia. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business. The interlocal agreement to transfer James Road extension to the city of Cocoa. This is kind of like the nightmare on Elm Street. Keeps coming back, coming back.
All right, this is, this is one more piece, sir, of the 2007 settlement agreement between the county, the city of Cocoa, and several developers who own the properties at the northeast and southeastern intersections of I-95 and 528. This one is specific to the southeastern portion. That agreement provided that access to the development on the southeast, which is now known as the Windward Preserve subdivision, which is located entirely within the city of Cocoa, that they would have an access across James Road. The developer had applied to Brevard County for a permit to construct an extension of James Road west of Friday, where it currently ends, for access to that subdivision. Because it's only gonna serve a subdivision within the city of Cocoa and Cocoa residents, everyone agreed that Cocoa should ultimately have the maintenance responsibility for that James Road extension for the, so this is an agreement that's gonna transfer the segment of James Road west of Friday to 95, to the city of Cocoa for construction of that roadway. The county will maintain ownership and control of the 50-foot drainage rightaway south of that segment. We'll still have permit authority for the discharge into that rightaway, and this agreement does not give any authority to discharge into that rightaway. They'd still have to go through all permitting for drainage and things like that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Morris. We have some cards here, Rick. Afternoon, Rick.
Afternoon. Rick Hefelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, District One. Kind of surprised to see the interlocal agreement and the fact that the permit closed. And looking at the permit, I have a public records request in that's almost a month old now. I was gonna try to figure out what was going on, because I was concerned about the water. I heard now that the county attorney says we haven't permitted any water into the James Canal. I hope that's true. I wanted to verify that myself, get records. A month later, I don't have records. I don't, and I have answers to no question. I've put written questions to Public Works, I guess, about, is there a water permit special? And how did this permit close? The last I heard, it had to be determined if it was gonna be a public or a private road. Is it a public or a private road? Because somebody threw signs up that said no trespassing. As far as I know, it's, it's still a public road, isn't it? I'd love somebody to answer that. Nobody even wanted to go down there and file a code complaint that somebody put illegally placed signs on Brevard County rightaway without a permit. You want to charge me for public records requests? That's fine. Why don't you collect some fines that are due? I had to, I went through, you don't know how many emails I went through to try to get a response to that. Somebody tried to, and I believe it was the developer or the owner, to intimidate the citizens, because we've been down there watching what they're doing. Turns out, there's an eagle on the property. Oh my God, who would have guessed? Now they're trying to say we can't, is it, is it a public road? Can I go down there? Last I heard, I could. County said, oh no, it's, it's still a public road. You can go down that road. Well then, who thought it was a good idea to say it's private property? No trespass. Wow. Signs are still there, as far as I know. Great job defending Brevard County residents. I really want to appreciate, you're holding the line for us. You've got a single point exit for a crap load of houses. Where's the, have you did a safety evaluation of that intersection? The permit was supposed to have questions from the county, from one of the engineers, about, well, how are you gonna improve that intersection? I don't know, because nobody gave me my public records. I hope you got a good answer, because when I get my public records, I'm gonna make sure you, you went and did a thorough job. I think this whole thing's stinky stinky. I mean, I'm trying to do my due diligence, and I can't get records. I don't get any answers to any questions. Nobody enforces code enforcement about a sign trying to intimidate the citizens. Is this what I expect from my county commission and, and my government? Mark Burnett, is that, is he the director? Is he here today? I was supposed, he was the only one that said, okay, we reached out, we'll, we'll have him remove the signs. Holy God, it had to escalate to that? This is, this is, I mean, I am trying to make sure you're doing it right, and I will continue. But so far, you're non-cooperative, and I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Mr. Hefelfinger?
Yes, ma'am.
How long ago did you put public records in?
On the, hold on, I have the records. Do you want to take time to go through that?
No, sir, if you would just tell me the date, I'm gonna ask questions and see if there was a hangup or what was going on. I'm gonna check that out. Did you say it was about four weeks ago?
Yeah, I've got it here somewhere. I got more paperwork than you guys do.
Well, if you just let me know, I'll, I'll take a peek and see.
Yeah, I mean, I was supposed to have them early this week, and that was the last time. But there were multiple questions that were not answered. Is, is there a water variance of some kind?
Yeah, for questions, go ahead, Commissioner Tabia. So, this'll help.
A question and a public record are two different things. A question requires maybe engineering to get it. A, a public record, and I don't know when you...
Christine Verrett, is she an engineer? Public Works?
A public record is something that already exists, and I don't know when you put it in, but I pretty much guarantee if you put in something that already exists...
Put in paid for. It's already checked. You guys already cashed my check.
That, we will...
Hundred forty some dollars, thank you.
I, I will get, a couple of us will get on this, but just to be clear, a question and a public request, a, a public records request are two different things.
Now, what about, what about a question in an email? Who answers that?
That is complete, that's not a public record. It is not a public record.
Who answers the question? I never got an answer.
Okay, I, I don't know what the question was. I don't know whether, would that, where that would be directed. But we are under state statute when it comes to the timely return of public record. Questions could require a whole bunch of stuff to be answered, figures to be done, engineering to happen, and, and that's a completely different. I just want you to be very clear that a public record is a document that already exists, and staff does a pretty darn good job getting those turned around exceedingly quickly, because it's work that doesn't have to be done other than gathering information and putting it together, unless it needs to be redacted or something like that, and I don't know what the request is. But those cannot be used interchangeably. Questions and public record are different, just to be very clear. So you were using them, and, and we will both look into that. If it was paid for, we will, we will get on that. We will get your answers as, as...
Okay, I expect my four hours' worth, that, put, put that together for that permit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Sullivan?
Good evening, Sandra Sullivan. So, as stated by the county attorney, there was a court-ordered stipulated agreement with some terms, and one of them pertaining to Friday Road was traffic calming. And in the stipulated agreement, it specifies a meeting with the people who live there to put impact, input into where those, that traffic calming should go. So this is related, so, just like you did, well, this is a little bit different commission, but some of you were here, back with Rockledge Trees Drive, and there was a public meeting held with the commissioner to take that feedback. And so there's quite a few issues pertaining with, with these, as referred to as Commissioner Rita, as the Brightline developments, north and south of, of 528 and I-95. And there's a number of things. So, related to this, I would ask that you hold off on a motion until you hold that public meeting, and get the input and answer the questions that the community has pertaining both to the cannaveral grows on this one, especially since this statement was made, that no decision was made, or no decision was made on the Angelica Road through, through fair to a urban development from a rural development. That's it. So, the request is for a meeting for these people that live in these communities. Thank you.
Motion to approve, item H1, sir.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right, let's go to new business, Development Environmental Services Group, an appeal request regarding appeal to denied sidewalk waiver for store safe of Rockledge. Oh, we have, is there any cards on this?
I don't see any, just sorry.
We have Cole Oliver here. I believe you're the attorney for the applicant. Is that correct, Cole?
Yes, sir. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
So, yes, we have our request in for a appeal of the denial of the sidewalk waiver. My client owns the property. It was a former Harbor Grove site at the intersection of Barnes Boulevard and US-1, and they are under the process of developing a self-storage facility there. The client has requested a waiver from the requirement to install a sidewalk, and in lieu of a total waiver, what they have requested from staff is to enter into a assessment agreement whereby they would agree to pay for and build the sidewalk at a future date when the county is connecting the rest of the sidewalks. There are very limited, if any, sidewalks within that area. I think the only ones that I can remember are the ones right at the intersection where it's crossing over US-1, where the railroad was, that Brightline put in. And then if you go north, I don't believe there's another sidewalk for a couple of miles. If you move south, there's a couple of sporadic pieces. And specifically, a parcel of my land, or not my land, that my client's land owns just south of there, this county entered into a very similar sidewalk assessment agreement along US-1 18 months ago. The reasons behind the sidewalk request is, one, it's really not going anywhere, and it's, instead of being a sidewalk, it's kind of a side stand. The client has had issues with people that come onto the property and set up shop, start selling T-shirts and other trespassing activities. And with a storage facility, they want to keep it safe. They believe that having sidewalk there that connects to nothing else would be a safety issue for their customers coming and going from the facility. You know, with that, I would... You know, with that, I would, you know, here for any questions that you all have, and, you know, respectfully request the assessment agreement.
Commissioner Goodson, this is your district. Have any comments?
Yeah, thank you. If, right now sidewalks are going for like, for six-inch, five-foot wide sidewalk is $9.25 a foot. So, what I don't understand about the developer, sidewalk was there on the beginning initial plans, all the way through permitting, and sometimes you have to be first. But, at the same token, don't like the, I'm more attuned to a bond placed on the land that would guarantee that we could either go to the bond if the developer sold or didn't want to buy, or didn't want to build, and have guarantee we'd have it. But if you understand anything about construction, there's always the first that has to go in. He's absolutely correct. The nearest sidewalk is that Park Avenue going north. The next nearest parking lot is over, there are other tracks on Barnes, which goes nowhere. It might be seventy-five feet. I found out from staff that it's hard to get these people, and no reflection on Cole, the developers, to put a sidewalk in, because everything I hear about plans is the bitch about a sidewalk. So, we're either going to have to change the variances or do something to guarantee, because they've put up a maintenance bond, two-year maintenance bond, if I'm not mistaken, correct? That, the maintenance bond, don't they, you require that, correct?
We require a performance bond for things that they build in the right of way, and then the maintenance of that work is required by a maintenance bond.
Correct. And that's a two-year maintenance bond, correct? Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And then the county has the option to point out the faults, and then the builder has to correct those faults before you accept it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct. So, don't understand why the owner wants to postpone this, because if things go up, you know, right now, at eight hundred feet, five foot wide, times nine twenty-five is somewhere around $45,000. And so everybody wants to save money, but that's the last thing you do before landscaping is a sidewalk. I am all for a bond, I'm not for the variance. I'm sorry, okay?
Okay. Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm going to ask for a little leeway. I have a few questions here, and Commissioner Goodson's going to be a little afraid because we may actually be on the same side of this one. Sorry. Mr. Oliver, I'm sorry, I, you know, I didn't get in touch with you before. This is things that probably could have been handled behind scenes, but you didn't reach out. But clearly, you are aware of Section 622956B2, Brevard County Code of Ordnance, requires the developer, quote, "provide sidewalks adjacent to the roadway abutting their project."
Yes, sir.
And I think Mr. Goodson, or Commissioner Goodson, did a good job. That was there prior to this land being purchased, was it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second, when the site plan was created, when the requirement outlines, were the requirements outlined that just went over in Brevard County of Ordnance, were they in place at that time?
I would agree.
Okay. So, Section 622956 goes on to say, requirements can be administratively waived in areas where it can be demonstrated by the applicant that there is, let me read this because it's very important, "no current or future need for sidewalks in the immediate area." So, staff has shown that actually the contrary of that is true. The site is within eight hundred feet of the intersection of US-1 and Barnes, and there is a high priority for sidewalks near major intersections. In fact, Space Coast TPO has designated this corridor as a priority for improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists. There are residential neighborhoods abutting this site. So my question to you, Mr. Oliver, do you believe that planning and development, the Space Coast TPO, and Public Works are all incorrect?
No, I wouldn't say they're incorrect. I would say that-
Neither would I. So I just, okay. In a 2022 study by Smart Growth America, Brevard County was ranked 12th most dangerous area in the county for, in the country, I'm sorry, for pedestrian safety, based on death per capita. There were ninety-three pedestrian deaths here in Brevard in this five-year span. According to vehicular data management company Geotab, the Florida section of US Highway One is the most dangerous road in the county, with 1,079 injuries over the course of a ten-year period. The US Department of Transportation goes on to say that roadways without sidewalks are more than twice as likely to have pedestrian crashes as ones without. So, my question to you, Mr. Oliver, is how concerned is your client with, client concerned with pedestrian safety?
I would say they're very concerned, but their position is, when the sidewalk would go anywhere else, they're agreeing to connect it. I don't see that the limited stretch of eight hundred feet is-
As Commissioner Goodson has said, someone has to be first. And that brings up the follow-up here. The applicant owns the parcel just to the south, which would require approximately nine hundred, nine hundred linear feet of sidewalk to be installed. If this request is approved, would you expect your applicant, the one that you're working for, to request the same waiver for the parcel that would be coming up?
I don't know the answer to that one, to be honest, Joe.
Okay.
I suspect they would, yes. If it's not going any further.
I appreciate your honesty. I really appreciate your honesty. I'll just go to closing here, let other people get. The developer knew this requirement when they purchased, when they started developing. Pedestrian safety should be the highest priority. And this is where I get into, and I have no qualms for Mr. Oliver here, but the county is comprised of highly educated, experienced, and qualified staff who make well-informed decisions. When builders and developers don't get the answers they want, it shouldn't be the policymakers, us, that override the decisions of staff. Again, I don't blame you, Mr. Oliver, but I'm very concerned if we sit here and we vote for this waiver here, this is going to start an ugly precedent. And you don't have to trust me on that. You heard Mr. Oliver just get up here and say, he's going to ask for the very same thing on the adjacent property. So, I like the idea of the bond that Commissioner Goodson said, but I think, I don't even think we should do that. I think we should just require the sidewalks to be built altogether. As you mentioned, this isn't a big cost. The developer just probably made a financial decision and said, you know, I can get an attorney up here for four or $5,000 or $10,000, and a, you know, a sidewalk costs $40,000, and we're going to build this and sell this in two years, and by that time, the sidewalk will be someone else's problem. So I don't, I don't belabor the issue, but I think that this waiver should be denied. So my motion would be deny the approval of the appeal requested by Storage of Rockwood LLC regarding the administration denial of waiver 23WV00020.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Question.
Commissioner Goodson.
Commissioner, are you also- So, are you also denying, you're not for the bond either, correct?
So, between you and me, that's my fallback. I would rather them build that as a condition, but if the votes aren't there, the fallback is that the, I do have a fallback motion if the votes aren't there, and I'd be more than willing to go over that, but I don't want to show that card right now.
You know, if you know anything about, and you do, you're very knowledgeable, and staff's very knowledgeable. The worst thing you have on a job is a sidewalk, as far as maintaining the sidewalk, watching the people that park on it, that drive over it, don't drive through the driveway. So there is some consideration there that you need time as a developer to get your security in place, but, you know, I'm for the bond, I'm not for the variance, I agree with you, but just wanted you to be aware of their, sidewalks are a pain and they're a pain. But I'm glad they're there. And he needs to be the first.
Hold on, Cole. Commissioner Pritchett.
I just want to thank you, first of all, for being such a good sport. You're such a nice person, and you have my respect. So I want to also say this, I will vote with the commissioner of the district on this. In my district, I make everybody build the sidewalks. So if he would have been different, I would have done it, because he has to see his area. But I just want to say that. So, complete respect for you, sir, but whatever Commissioner Goodson decides to do, I will be with him.
And if, you know, if I may respond briefly, you know, to Commissioner Tobias's point, I do understand the appeal, not wanting to overturn staff, you know, each one of these as they come through, either way. But, you know, my client's in a position where literally just down the road, they own a piece that's very similarly situated, in which this assessment agreement was granted. I wasn't involved with that application or anything else, so I don't know the very details of it, but it's 6,400 US-1.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Who made that decision? The board didn't make that decision. Staff made that decision.
Correct. And so, from your perspective of there being two ways-
I trust staff. Staff made that decision to grant that. So I'm all for staff, but now you're asking for something different. You don't, you liked the decision staff made previously, now you don't like the decision.
On a different piece of property. So, so it's, from our position, what are the criteria for applying for a assessment agreement and having consistent application of that at the staff level? You know, we don't know that. And I'm not picking on anyone here, and maybe to, I mean, to your point of, somebody's got to build it, and maybe I can find a way to bridge the gap between everyone up here, is if we can agree to the bond, with the bond being tied to a specific date, i.e., when the development of the southern portion that connects it to the intersection, that whole piece, because what we're going to deal with is this developer, it's going to build this first piece, and at some point, someone's going to build that second piece, and they're going to be in a process of, are they tearing up that sidewalk, breaking that sidewalk, maintaining that sidewalk with the next piece that comes in? And that might be two years after that maintenance bond has expired. Then it's going to be the county that's going to be, you know, in the middle of dealing with it. So I believe my client would respectfully agree to a performance bond, to Commissioner Goodson's point, if we can tie it to the total development of that parcel, which would then tie it to the intersection within the eight hundred feet intersection.
Mr. Chair, do we have any idea how long, do you have any idea how long that would?
I don't know. I would respectfully tie it to a timeframe that you guys can agree to.
No, he didn't. He's not saying two years.
Hold on, everybody, please.
Sorry.
That's all right. Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the floor, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are you wanting to speak?
I am.
I'm kidding. Go ahead.
After hearing this at the briefing, I think everybody over there at the table will say that I was one of the guys that said, you know, I want a bond. I want something. I want a bond to see that it's going to be paid, are done. And I happened to be going to Titusville today and stopped by the property, and my whole thing turned around, boy. Because I built a lot of subdivisions in my life and put some sidewalks in myself. And I can tell you exactly what's going to happen if we put that sidewalk, if they put that sidewalk in now. It's going to be eight hundred feet with the sidewalk, with dirt this way and dirt that way, and people driving over it with concrete trucks, and people doing stuff that will absolutely demolish the sidewalk, and in a year's time, they'll have to redo it. So, I would like to see, if we go anywhere, that we go with the bond on it. I'd like to see that we at least get everybody in line with being able to know that it's going to be built at some point in time. But I don't, it's really ugly out there, and to put a sidewalk in the middle of nowhere with dirt on both sides of it makes no sense to me, but I'm good. Commissioner Goodson?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's my back here. Okay.
This would be a question to Morris. Morris, if we approve a bond tonight on this property, you can fix the bond on a timeframe, and you can tie it to the land that if they sell, it still stays with, before they sell, somebody has to make good on the bond. Is that possible?
We can do that. We should tie it to a short developer's agreement specific to the sidewalk, and then we would secure performance of that with a bond.
Next question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Now, if we should do that, pass that, we're not coming back and, would the bond be for a year or two years? Or you could, you could set the time, whatever you wish on the bond, correct?
The board could. You may want to do five years with a provision that a staff deems it necessary prior to that, and they construct it when the county requires, but at a minimum, you know, if it hasn't been required by five years, sometime before that, it'll be constructed.
I definitely don't, Chair?
Go ahead.
Definitely don't like five years, because, you know, I can see a one-year bond, and then at our discretion to, say, build it, or either, at our discretion, to renew it for another year. Five years is way too long, because I agree with everything, even though I drove the property many times. And today, what was funny about it, when you got up to Dunkin' Donut, there's sidewalks, but there's seven bicycles riding in the road. So people don't always use, they should, but sometimes they have the bike lane and all that. So, I'm for, I would like to make a motion that we propose the bond to the developer for a period of young, one year, with an extension of a year, and that's it. Or either, you could word it, excuse me, you could word it, if there's development on either end that warrants it, then you could call the bond due at any time.
Commissioner, Commissioner Goodson has a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
I had, I had a motion on the table. So I'd like to, first of all, withdraw-
That motion died because it lacked a second.
Did we even bring it up for a second?
Yeah, well, I killed that.
Sorry. I apologize. Commissioner Goodson, can I expand a little bit on that? I think, because I think we're in the exact same place.
Why would I not expect you to expand?
And let me, let me, this motion came from the county attorney's office. I asked him to do this, so-
Well, you got a key to his office? I can't even get in there.
I changed one thing, and that was the five years down to one year. So, everything else I got directly from the county attorney's office. The motion I would have, that I think mirrors yours, I move to approve the appeal requested by Storage of Rockledge LLC regarding the administrative denial of waiver 23WV00020. The approval is subject to the developer entering into agreement in a form acceptable to staff and the county attorney providing for the construction of the sidewalk when there is a current need, but no more than one year from today's date. The developer shall post a one-year surety performance bond in the amount of 110% of the estimated construction cost of the sidewalk, based on the estimate certified by a professional engineer and determined by staff to be sufficient. There shall be no extension to the one-year bond period. I guess there should be one extra year, so for a, one extra, so that I would have to change as well. The county manager designee is authorized to execute the developer's agreement on behalf of the county, and to take such action to require the sidewalk to be installed as may be necessary, including forfeiture of the bond if the developer fails to install the improvements as required.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Goodson?
Yes, if, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If staff is okay with it. I haven't heard anything from staff about a bond. Thank you, Ben.
Ted or Mark, who wants to handle whether you're okay with it?
If that's what the board wishes to do, I would be happy to handle it.
Yeah, that is, that is not acceptable. Somebody say something of value.
Trust me, we had this whole discussion in the briefing, and it went on for about the same amount of time that we're doing here, and pretty much, the bond is going to be the answer to it. So I would like to get to that motion one more time.
Okay. County attorney, do you have something that you'd like to put on the table?
I'd just like to request one point of clarification. Is the county manager authorized to make the decision on whether to extend that bond for one year? Does the board want to see that back?
I would say county manager.
I agree.
Or designee.
Okay. In an abundance of caution, we're going to let Commissioner Goodson's motion die. We're going to talk to Commissioner Tobias one more time, and Commissioner Tobias is going to read the motion as agreed to by both parties.
Can I borrow that back one more time?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I move to approve the appeal of the request by Storage of Rockledge LLC regarding the administrative denial of waiver 23WV00020. The approval is subject to developer's entry into an agreement in a form acceptable to staff and the county attorney providing construction of the sidewalks when there is a current need, but no more than one year from today's date. The developer shall post a one-year surety performance bond in the amount of 110% of the estimated construction cost of the sidewalk, based on the estimated, certified by a professional engineer and determined by staff to be sufficient. There shall be one extension of one year that can be approved by the county manager or his designee. Is authorized to execute the develop, the county manager or designee is authorized to execute the developer's agreement on behalf of the county, and to take such action to require the sidewalks to be installed as may be necessary, including forfeiture of the bond if the developer fails to install the improvements as required.
Okay, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Goodson, is there any more discussion from the board? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lauer.
Take all the time.
Now, Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to propose to the board that we direct staff to either clean up the variance clause or whatever, so that we don't have to fight this issue every time. If we go through approving plans, then we should have a good variance, or no variance, and ha, and put the bond in it, so we don't have to fight this battle every time.
Okay, Mark or, or Ted?
I've got that, we are planning to bring that ordinance back to the board with that proposed modification in it at a future meeting.
Okay, good, that'll clear up a big, some serious questions. All right, anything more before we move on? All right, no resolution and maintenance maps for Rockledge Drive right away from US Highway 1 to 1851, Rockledge Drive located in the Onco Period, Brevard County, District 2. There are a few cards, and number one is Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So just like the bright line, this is another one of the shenanigans that was very difficult for this community. I helped work on this with this community, and I was at the community meeting that was held, and the, so this seems to be moving forward to the plans with the, the paving, et cetera. But in all those meetings, the community was told they needed to cut down 67 trees for this project in order to repave the road. And what we found out was, on the lagoon plan, this was planned for sewer, so when we followed up and we asked the question, are you repaving the road because you're putting in sewer, the answer was yes, but they weren't told. And this is the part of not engaging the people, so we, the people, paid, we agreed to vote to pay taxes for projects for the Save the Lagoon. And then when you have a project where this road, those trees, serve a purpose of holding the banks and holding the road from washing out, has been identified by NOAA as being one, being federally recognized as having a lot of resiliency issues with potential flooding from surge events. So it just seems like you're not listening to the will of the people when it comes to projects. A lot of people, I mean, they've, they had petitions with thousands of petitions on it, they had people, filled this room with more than 100 people, and they voted for the lagoon tax. A lot of these people on this road already have advanced septic, and so you're going to come before the people related to this, and you're going to ask them to vote to renew the lagoon tax, and yet here you are still moving ahead with a project with planning for Rockledge Drive, to take down the trees that are important to them, as part of their quality of life that they live there, so thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Rumeloff, is that how you say that? Rumeloff?
That's correct. Good job.
I want to thank the commissioners for giving me the opportunity to speak. I was here a couple of years ago, speaking on the same subject, so unfortunately I'm back to talk about it again. The, the trees on Rockledge Drive, the decision has been made in the past to go ahead and leave the trees as they are, that was a decision that was made, I believe, a couple of years back. I believe that's been revisited currently with the proposal being to cut some of the trees down or trim them down. And to me, I don't see any change in the issues that existed a couple of years ago when the decision to leave the trees there was made. The will of the people certainly hasn't changed in that period of time. I'm, I'm supposing that perhaps there's a different viewpoint in, in the minds of the commissioners or new commissioners, and I, and I respect that. Nonetheless, I, it's my hope that when the rubber meets the road and a decision needs to be made on this, and I don't know that it already has been, that the, the commissioners will abide by the wisdom of the decision that was made a couple of years ago to leave the trees as they are, and protect Rockledge Drive, this particular aspect, which is very singular, and it's part of the legacy of the drive. That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kirk. Kristi Wilson? J. Kristi Wilson?
J. Kristi Wilson.
There you go. How are you? Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is J. Kristi Wilson III, I'm an attorney with offices at 601 in Orlando. And I'm here on behalf of the organization, the Rockledge Drive Tree Coalition. I, by the way, my office is on Fern Creek Drive, I was thinking, in Orlando. Couple of things that I wanted to share with you in the time that's allotted here briefly. You're being asked to approve a maintenance map tonight, and that maintenance map gives you, we can debate about the amount of ownership, but it gives you ownership of something that you don't claim ownership, you haven't claimed ownership to before, including private property that has been maintained, and that flies in the face. It's, it's in strict tension with Article 10, Section 6A of the Florida Constitution, which guarantees that no private property will be taken except with, for a public purpose and with full compensation paid to each owner. So you need to look at that very carefully. There is a statute, a statute of limitations, that in this case, because the county didn't build this roadway, if you can demonstrate that you have maintained it continually for a period of seven years, then you can take these rights from the, that today until you make that decision belong to the adjacent owners. And I would ask you to consider this very carefully. The, I asked counsel for the staff report, and he sent me that, and included in the staff report is an affidavit from the road, from someone with road and bridge, one of your staff, and he says, we've maintained this road for seven years. Well, what have you done? Where are the records? I think as a matter of inquiry, you at least owe the citizens the, the time spent looking at those maintenance maps to see what exactly has been done, rather than taking the affidavit, saying, oh yeah, we maintained this, because we have a serious contest with you about, with staff about that, whether they in fact have. I have requested, I filed a public information request today with the, with the county, and I apologize for the late filing, but we only learned of this meeting on Thursday. And I've asked the county to provide me copies of all the work they've done, job orders, who did it, when they did it, because that's all relevant here. And I just want to underscore the importance of Rockledge Drive, I'm sorry, may I have just a brief?
No, sir, I'll, I'll give you five seconds.
Okay, Rockledge Drive is a, is a scenic highway, and these trees are specimen trees. You have a code that's 500 pages long dealing with trees, and prohibits the destruction of specimen trees.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, Doug Simon.
Good evening, Doug. Good evening, commissioners. I've been here before, trying to save the historical live oaks on Rockledge Drive and their canopies, and everyone's sort of gotten to where I'm going already, but our attorney, Mr. Williams, kind of hit most of the points I'm, I have written down here, but, and also Kurt had hit some points, which is that Kurt Smith, two, three years ago, I have a letter from him where he, he said, they said, the county gives up, and it wasn't my fault, and I'm leaving the trees alone. And here we are, right back, start again. So my question now, which our attorney, Mr. Williams, covered to a degree, but I, I just want to get it handled for myself. I was forwarded an email, which Mark Bernath, the Public Works Director of Brevard County, sent out just Thursday. In the email, he stated that he wants to use Florida Statute 95.361, which is an adverse possession statute, covering Rockledge Drive pavement. I had called up his office, and I never got a straight answer. I want to know if it, what the reason is for wanting to do this tonight, this resolution and maintenance maps for Rockledge Drive. They called it right away, which really is only the pavement. Rockledge Drive does not have a right of way, it does not have, does not have easements, it's the old US one from 1900 or something like that. And I really just wanted to get an answer, which I haven't gotten. What is the purpose of this, this adverse possession? Is it to control the road, to make sure the state doesn't see, still have their hands on it, to, to, I'm not trying to be rude saying this, but to do a land grab where they think that maybe they can? I, I'd just like to get a straight answer, that's all, nothing, nothing crazy. That's it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Can I get, can I get a straight answer from, can you put something in that I can have him?
We're not answering questions on this, sir, tonight.
No, no, I understand that, but can, can someone ask him to do that?
Why don't you email me, and I will get it to the right person?
I appreciate that, thank you. That's very nice.
Jason.Steele@BrevardFlorida.gov, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Carol Pope. Hello, Carol. Been a while, hasn't it? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. Good evening, I'm Carol Pope, and I've lived at 715 Rockledge Drive for over 50 years, as Jason's been in, in the Atlantic, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We're concerned all up and down the drive about the precedent that's being set with the, this request tonight, and don't really understand it. When I pulled the information up on the county website, this is the information that comes up, and you really can't determine how it's affecting your own property. So I would request that you delay this tonight, and let the county hold a meeting, or at least make these maps available to the public, to the homeowners, so that they can actually see how their land's being affected. Again, this print is so small, you can't read it. Also, as far as I've been driving up and down that road for 50 years, many times a week, I've never seen a county maintenance vehicle out there doing any type of maintenance at all, and I know they don't, the county or the city doesn't maintain the road sides in Rockledge, so that's one thing to consider. But the one thing that I really would ask you tonight is, please, consider delaying this, because you really, we really can't understand how this affects anybody up and down the road there, what this really means. And we are being quite concerned with the issues that have been taking place on Rockledge Drive, with the county attitude toward the street. Is this some type of a county vendetta against Rockledge Drive particularly? Because there's many side streets that lead into Rockledge Drive, they have tree issues, they have low-hanging branches, and there's not been this type of tree trimming request or right-of-way request, we don't see that on any other street. So what's going on with just Rockledge Drive? It's very concerning to everybody on Rockledge Drive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Carol. Okay, any more discussion in regards to this? Do we have somebody that wants to talk? Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Pritchett.
Mr. Bernath, can you answer the questions on this for the maintenance, what type of maintenance that you're looking to do with this?
Yes, Commissioner, so first off, it's important to note that we have been maintaining the road since the late 70s and 1980s based on available records, depending on which segments were turned over to us by FDOT at the time. That includes road maintenance, drainage, and landscaping. And so this is nothing that we are taking that we don't already have based on Florida statute. We have been maintaining it more than the last seven years, and as such, this is simply enumerating and documenting what the county already owns by, on, as far as boundaries on Rockledge Drive.
Is this going to set forth any different things that we're about to do here soon, or?
That's not part of what the maintenance map is, this is just establishing, confirming the ownership, that's a separate issue, and we'll come back to the board as a separate resolution in the future.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And this action tonight doesn't, respectfully doesn't have the effect described by, by the attorney. The vesting of the title under the statute occurs when the prescription period under the statute is met, so that was satisfied in, in the case of Rockledge Drive a long time ago. The, the maintenance map, what that does is it visually depicts and lends clarity to what has been maintained for the required period of time in which, under the statute title is already vested in the county. It's filed then as prima facie evidence of that maintenance, but it's not an action tonight that, that means if you take this action, parts of the road suddenly blonched the county that didn't before, that's already been established by that continual maintenance over time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, if it would be possible, I, I would think this would be fairly easy, but if Commissioner Goodson has any kind of heartburn on it, since it's his district, I would like to hear from him, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
I have no heartburn about this issue. If the, if the county owns it, they own it, and everybody needs to understand that. And I've been here 65 years, and I, I have seen a lot of county work on Rockledge Drive, so I would make a motion for acceptance.
Motion on the floor to accept, seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. My only discussion is, is that, I guess, Mark, are we going to, we're not going to go out there and start cutting down trees or anything of that nature at this particular point in time?
That's correct, this is, has nothing to do with the trees.
All right, so, and, and there won't be anything done like that without public notice, is that accurate?
That's correct.
All right, you heard the motion on the floor, no more discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, yes, it's been seconded.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, aye.
Right, thank you. The motion was by Commissioner Goodson, the second one's by Commissioner Pritchett.
Okay.
All right, so we are through that, we have board reports?
No.
No, I've done, what am I missing here? Oh, this.
I-3 was removed.
I-3 was removed from the agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm thrilled with it, too. All right, so. I-4, permission to advertise a request for proposal for financial auditor services, appoint a board representative and auditor selection committee. Any cards on that?
We do, we do that all in one motion?
Right.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make, I'll make a motion for that, and to appoint Commissioner Pritchett.
All right, you okay with that, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I do.
All right, that's great, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Felton, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobias, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay, the motion carries. Request approval to advertise, no request for proposal for state lobbying services. Conversation but from the board in regards to this. We got Sandra Sullivan that would like to speak about it? Sandra? Did you say you're passing?
Pass.
I'm, I think I'm going to pass out.
Yeah.
What? You passed? Okay, I can get used to that. Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Tobias? Sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since 2016, Ronald L. Book has served as Brevard County, I think he's done a very good job at this. In fact, since 2016, he hasn't received or requested a increase of his compensation controlled by either CPI or any other measure. In other words, he's at the same rate. I, I think he's been a very effective lobbyist. Lobbying is a very, very tricky job, and I think Mr. Book does a very good job at that due to the compensation, not by us, but by the numerous clients, both local government and private. He has quite a few connections with the governor's office, with leadership, which by the way, changes every two years. So the incoming Senate president will be Ben Albritton, and Danny Perez down, down in Miami, and he's fostered these relationships for quite some time. So it's my opinion that Mr. Book has not only done a great job for us, but he's uniquely positioned to keep on working. Therefore, I would suggest that we move forward with negotiating a contract with our current firm, and appoint Chairman Jason Steele to negotiate the terms of said contract. Clearly, you have quite a bit of expertise as a former member, but someone that has numerous connections. but someone that has numerous connections with the movers and shakers up there in Tallahassee. So I move to authorize staff to move forward with negotiation terms and professional service fees with the addition of Chairman Steele to the negotiating committee with the county's current lobbying firm, Ronald L. Book, and bringing back the contract to the board for consideration. That would be the motion that I would have.
Sir? Is there a second before we get a? Did you?
No, I just want a question.
Okay. Hold on. Commissioner Felton was next and then Commissioner Goodson, then Commissioner Pritchett. Okay, thank you, you were second. All right.
Well, I, I think if we do this for one year, continue with Ron Book and then let the new board select the next lobbyist, that's why I'd be in favor of, of tonight.
Is that a motion?
I think they already have a motion.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by you, Commissioner Goodson.
Not me.
Hold on, hold on, slow down. Did you have any comments, Commissioner Pritchett? We, we have a motion on the floor.
Right, but I think he was trying to make a friendly amendment.
I, I understand that. So before the friendly amendment comes up, did you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Tobias, are you acceptable to a friendly amendment?
I don't know how friendly it is. I certainly would like to get Commissioner Goodson's thoughts over there. He will be, his tenure will be certainly longer than mine. I have, I, I looked up, and, and I'll pass this out. I looked up some neighboring counties. When I say neighboring, I, I'm sorry, similar sized counties and lobbying contracts. And that would be Lee, Polk, Pasco, and Volusia that all are within one hundred thousand, one hundred thousand residents of where we are. We, our current contract is by far the lowest per capita, less than a quarter of, for instance, what Polk is paying. So I would say not only do we have a great lobbyist here, we, we've got a great negotiating that has happened back in, in 2016. But I would go with Commissioner Goodson on this one as the tiebreaker as to whether or not that one year is friendly.
Commissioner Felton, do you have a comment?
Just clarify something. I, I think a lot of Ron Book, too. And this is just simply the idea that we're going to have three new commissioners here in Thanksgiving. And so if the contract stands beyond that, I think they ought to be able to vote on it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and Commissioner Tobias, you will, you're not willing to take a friendly amendment by Commissioner Felton? If not, then we're going to go ahead and have additional discussion. No more additional discussion?
I had.
Okay, yes, sir, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Tell me about Ron Book's health. Tell me about that.
Is this to me?
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Yes, to you, John.
I think it's public knowledge that, that Mr. Book has been through some health issues. But I think, I hope, I'm not a physician. That doesn't, that hasn't stopped his work around Tallahassee. That certainly hasn't stopped his contact here. It's not just Ron Book. Ron Book employs three other individuals as well. But you're right, you know, we're, you're paying for the marquee in the top and that is Mr. Book. And, and, and I will divert to you on this one, Commissioner Goodson. If you think, if you'd rather do one year, I will certainly change my, change my motion to one year as opposed to three. I don't know, I obviously have no idea what negotiating position that puts us in, a one-year contract versus a three, but I'll go with your judgment on this one.
Can I ask staff that, if, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Frank, tell me about Mr. Book. How, how, what are your feelings? Because you work with him more probably than we do.
Yeah, I mean, he's done, his, yeah, they've done a very good job for us on a variety of issues. They're always responsive. And so, you know, we gave the board a variety of options. And so if this one would be to extend it, it's just a matter of the board's preferences, the amount of time, and we'll be happy to work with the chair if that's what the board decision is to bring back a agreement for that either one or three-year period. We would, staff would be happy with either one.
I see some validity in Commissioner Felton's comments about three new board members and they should be given the right. Could we, John, would you consider asking the consultant, Ron Book, his price on a one-year? Giving the board the option next year to vote on him? Whether, would you consider that in your motion?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I have, I would never enter into negotiations with Mr. Book dealing with. That is, that is something with us. In fact, I asked, my motion perceives Commissioner Steele being part of that. But if you're comfortable, if you're comfortable with one year on this one, if you'd rather go in that direction, I am more than willing to amend, amend that. So.
I would rather do that.
Okay, so I will amend my motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize staff to move forward with negotiation, with negotiating the terms of the professional service contract and fees for a term of one year with the addition of Chair Steele to the negotiating committee with the county's current lobbying firm, Ronald L. Book, and bring back the contract to the board for consideration.
Okay, is. Okay, there's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right.
This one should be good.
We have board reports.
No, we're on.
I six?
Sexual contentations.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, oh, boy.
Legislative intent and permission to advertise an ordinance, amending seventy-four, Article Six, Section seventy-four dash one oh two, Brevard County Code of Ordinances pertaining to the Sexual Offenders and Sexual Predators Act. Who is, who put this forward? Commissioner Tobias?
Get it.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, this is not a solution looking for a problem. There's evidence of sexual offenders having been at fairs in Brevard. As mentioned in my board report in the two twenty meeting, Brevard County Code, Section seventy-four, one oh TB seven, grants an exemption for sexual offenders and predators to enter into a thousand-foot radius of a park, quote, "as a result of fulfilling legally allowable duties imposed by gainful employment." There is no prohibition in our code for these offenders or prohibitors whose victims were a minor to even work at a school, daycare, park, or playground. While organizations should be performing background checks on individuals, we cannot mandate that. What we can control is the language in our code. This item is requesting approval of legislative intent and permission to advertise for an amendment of the section of code. The amendment would add clarification that an offender, predator, who has committed an offense where the victim is a minor, cannot work in a school, childcare facility, park, playground, or other place where children regularly congregate. The minor, this mirrors Florida Section seven seven five point two one, Section ten B. The motion is, I've due to approve legislative intent and permission to advertise an amendment to Brevard County Code of Ordinances, Section seventy-four, one oh two B seven, restricting the exemption so that an offender or predator who has committed offense where the victim is a minor cannot work in a school, childcare facility, park, playground, or any other place where children regularly congregate. That is the, the issue in the motion, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second to the? I've got that card. Is there a second to it? There's a second by Commissioner Pritchett. The motion was by Commissioner Tobias. We'll have some discussion now. Before we do, Robert Burns.
Good evening, Mr. Burns.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for taking this up in such a timely fashion. As Commissioner Tobias mentioned, that this is actually happening. This isn't, this isn't a hypothetical situation. This is something that's currently going on in our county. And when I found out about it, shocked isn't the right word. I was angry about it because I just couldn't believe that it was true. And if government's number one priority is to protect our citizens, then the number zero priority should be to protect our children. And the way that this ordinance is currently written, not only does it not protect our children, I believe that it endangers our children. Because parents are navigating an invisible minefield of trying to think that they're taking their children to a place that's supposed to be safe from individuals who've committed these crimes and been convicted of these crimes, not knowing that not only are they allowed to violate the thousand-foot rule, they can actually work in these facilities. They can be strapping their children down into these safety rides. They can be handing them snow cones. And it's not hypothetical. After we published our article, some of the vendors that were working in this organization, I'm not naming names, but some of the individuals that were working in this organization next to it, the individual that was the impetus of this was bringing free food to that vendor and they didn't know why. And when they, when he brought the food to that vendor, he would play with their children, unsuspecting, not knowing the history and the criminal history of this individual. And they felt, they kind of passed it off as just a strange character. But after they found out who he is and what he is, they were extremely upset, as I think any parent would be. So this is something that is urgent. I think it's paramount that we protect our children. I think it's an easy fix. It's, it's, I understand the importance of trying to reintegrate and rehabilitate certain citizens in, in our community. But that should not and will not ever trump the safety of our children. And I think that we have to fix this and we have to fix it now.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Motion on the floor, is there any discussion? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. County manager, you have a report?
I do not have a report, Mr. Chair.
County attorney, do you have a report?
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Goodson.
I have a report, sir.
Okay.
I would like, I'm sure the board's aware of it, but last week we lost a great Brevard County person, Jerry Sansom. If you didn't know Jerry, he was a lobbyist for the state. He was definitely always at meetings around and a personal friend. And let's all pray for Dixie. Now, then I have another apology to offer. Last week, last meeting, I made a comment about term limits and undoubtedly stepped on toes. So let me apologize to Congressman Posey and Thad Altman. I did not reply, I meant it to imply their longevity. I meant it just as an example of people wanting term limits. And I'm sorry. That being said, that's it, sir.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Felton?
I have no report.
Commissioner Steele?
I have no report.
Commissioner Tobias? The light part of the menu's up, I think.
Thank you. A couple of things. Commissioner Goodson, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for being out there on the canvassing committee today. We saw your smiling face there, working hard for not only this board, but the citizens of Brevard County. Thank you for taking up that responsibility. I, too, saw the news about Mr. Sansom. I've known him for quite some time. I went forward, drafted up a resolution, sent it over to. I know she's dealing with a lot of things. But, you know, whenever things calm down, I, I think that will be one of my twelve, if she's amenable to it, that will be one of my twelve resolutions so we can honor his legacy, not only to, you know, the waterways of Florida, but all he's contributed to, to government bodies. But thank you for pointing that out. So onto the vice vice chair stuff. Today is National Baked Scallop Day. There's the, a useless Florida fact. Florida Southern College, located in Lakeland, has the largest collection of Frank Lloyd Wright architecture in the world. The campus of FSC has thirteen Wright-designed buildings, including the Thad Bunker Building, Danforth Chapel, and Annie Pfeiffer Chapel. The construction of these buildings began in nineteen thirty-eight and was completed in nineteen fifty. This day in Florida history, writer Carl Hyacinth was born in Plantation in nineteen fifty-three. He is best known as a satirical columnist for the Miami Herald as he continues to write for the paper until 2021. He was hired by the Herald in nineteen seventy-six. One of Hyacinth's best-known novels, Striptease, was turned into a major motion picture starring Demi Moore and directed by Andrew Bergman. Apple TV is currently producing a series based on another Hyacinth book, Bad Monkey, which is set in the Florida Keys and Bahamas. The show will star Vince Vaughn. County employees, and today is a little bit different. I have two. The first one is Giselle Newman. She's Associate Environmental Specialist with Natural Resources. She has been here one year. About Giselle, Giselle is a dedicated environmental permit reviewer and always had a smile and kind word for citizens and coworkers. The embodiment of generosity, Giselle was inspired in 2021 to anonymously donate a kidney after listening to a podcast. She was found to be a viable donor in July 2023 and successfully donated her kidney nicknamed Sidney the Kidney on January thirtieth, 2024. Her altruistic gift kicked off a chain donation that creates opportunities for endless recipient donors pairings. Giselle invited anyone, Giselle invites anyone interested in donating to reach out to her as she loves to talk kidneys. When Giselle isn't saving lives, she enjoys rock climbing, crafting, traveling, and her two bearded dragons, Nemo and Tad Cooper. She will be marrying her fiance, Alex, in New Zealand at a destination wedding. That sounds really exciting. Giselle, where are you? The kidney one? Very, very impressive. And a second one is Karen Conde. It's very important. She's the assistant to the county manager in the county manager's office. She has thirty years of service. Karen Conde is an example of how drive determination and excellent customer service skills can lead to success. Karen began her career with the Brevard County in nineteen ninety-four, the Office Assistant Two in Tourism Development. She moved to Staff Assistant and then Legal Secretary in the County Attorney's Office and then Administrative Secretary, the Fire Chief, in Fire Rescue. Her work ethic in Fire Rescue led her to be promoted to the Executive Secretary, then Human Resources Director Frank Abate, and then Administrative Assistant to the Department Director. Her positive attitude and excellent skills set the lead to promotion as Employment and Compensation Specialist, Personal Manager, and ultimately in March 2022 to the position of Assistant to the County Manager. Along the way, Karen has received many accolades and awards, including Extra Mile Pulling Together, and was twice presented with a Brevard's Best Award. In addition, she graduated from the County Management Certification Program, known as the Employee Development Program, and Brevard County Executive Leadership Institute. She has participated and helped coordinate multiple Lean Six Sigma initiatives and recently earned her Green Belt. Karen has Associate of Science degree in legal, assisting legal studies, and Associate of Arts degree, a Bachelor of Arts degree, and her Master's degree in Management and Human Resources. During her thirty-year career with Brevard County, she became a tremendous asset to the Brevard, to the county manager, assistant county managers, development directors, and other county employees and the citizens of Brevard County in total. Colleagues universally praise her for embodying customer service professionalism and genuine willingness to help others as a result of county success. So here are some quotes. Quotes from Shannon Wilson County Attorney's Office. Karen is a customer service professionalism and good mannered, and, and a good-mannered professional. As, as they say, when you look up any of these terms, phrases in the dictionary, there is Karen Conde's picture. I've worked with Karen a number of years and have never seen her turn away or decline to give her all in assisting a fellow, fellow employee or citizen. She does not hesitate to pitch in just for any project or assignment with, when asked or needed. As a friend, I enjoy sharing updates on our daughters and sometimes commiserating, sometimes laughing over our stories. There are few people who, there are few people who I enjoy working with more and respect. Quote from Tad Cawkins. She's a fantastic resource for just about anything and she's always helpful with dealing with system application products. Quote from Ann McCormick, Human Resources. I consider Karen one of my best friends, both in and out of work, and her, and having her to work with and lean on and laugh and sometimes cry with has made the employees' workplace more fun and some days more manageable. And I am forever grateful for the opportunity to share a friendship in this crazy life with her. With Jim Leisenfeld. When it comes to hunting, she's a better shot than her husband. She also drives the highest Jeep in the employee parking lot. Quote from Mr. Denninghoff. I'm going to have to bleep some things out here, so sorry. A word that hasn't been used here is integrity. She has integrity that does not quit. She's a pleasure to work with. Quote from County Manager Frank Abate. The key to any leader's true success is having the right people around them. Karen is a shining example, that foundational principle. And I'm confident every leader with our organization enthusiastically shares my thoughts about Karen. Karen is a big fan of Neo-Western series Yellowstone, so you may want to pass if she offers you a ride to the train station. But for any other need you might have, there are few people in this organization more up to the task and eager to lend a hand than Karen Conde. It sounds like Karen is everyone's best friend. Everyone considers her that way. That is a special. That is a special trait. Karen, I understand your tenure here is ending and the county will be worse off for wear. So thank you so much. We appreciate all your hard work. Thank you for the indulgence, Mr. Chair. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Nice. We have some public comments now and we have the mayor of Cocoa Beach here, Mayor Keith Capizzi. Mayor, sorry to make you wait this long, but
No, big deal.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. So I figured I would just address you guys. I'm sure by now you've gotten a response to your request and I felt like I owe it to you personally to, to let you guys hear it from me. I do respect all you guys. As a commissioner myself, I know it's not an easy job, so I thank you. We don't always agree, but I do respect you guys for sure. Steele, thank you very much for your, your accurate portraying of how we do feel. Tabia, I'm not really, I don't really understand why our budget is any of your concern, but I will address some of your concerns since you did decide to put a public request in for our $7,000 cartoons. That was something that was put in from the previous manager and it must have passed through without us even noticing it, but current commission thinks it's a waste of money. You're absolutely correct. That is a stupid waste of money. We are not going to spend that $7,000 on that. So just so you know, that's a, that's a moot point. The 2,000, or 200,000 for the skate park is a safety issue. If you've been out to our skate park, there's holes in the coping, there's cracks in the concrete. It is absolutely a safety concern. It's not just so we can just have toys. It's, it's actually something that if we don't take care of, we're going to have to shut it down and that's an asset that we need to take care of. As we've stated, well, you also said that we decided to contribute nothing, which is not true. We actually, we're going to send in and we voted to give you 89,000 for the lifeguards because you chose to take the stance and say that we are disingenuous and we, we're going to give you nothing. Well, we'll stick with that. We'll give you nothing. So, you know, you guys drive the tourists to us. You guys advertise all the way from New York to Cocoa Beach. Come to Cocoa Beach, swim Cocoa Beach, we have lifeguards. And you, you advertise Cocoa Beach because we are a name brand. Our name brand sells. You know it. If you could bring people in Cocoa Beach, you bring in TDC money, tax dollars. So our taxes pay for our residents, for our residents' beaches, for the, for the lifeguards on that. And then the TDC should take care of their guests. That's the way we believe it and I'm going to be talking with every single mayor in the county and we will stand united. I'm sure of that. So that's, that's my, my stance on it and I do thank you guys for, for listening to me.
Sir?
Yeah.
Is that okay, sir?
Yeah, go ahead. We normally don't do this, but go ahead, Commissioner Pritchett.
Right, but we, we can though.
You can.
I'll allow it.
You had, I don't know what your response is. Did you guys say you weren't going to help pay for lifeguards on your beaches?
No, your TDC money that you get will pay for it.
We, we can't do that with the TDC funds. You know that. Well, hold on, let me just finish this. So here's, here's my concern. We could quit advertising Cocoa Beach, but that would be really hard on your community because there's a lot of tax you raise from having tourists come in because we're a big tourist area. So I, I do have concern. I mean, I, I'm in North Brevard, we don't have beaches. I don't have to utilize any of the county's general fund for this. So, you know, when we do this with others, I get it, I don't want people to die. That's a big concern of mine. So right now with, with this becoming so political like this, I have a concern that you're not caring about that. I'm just going to tell you my thoughts on it because you just, you just said that. I don't understand why the city, I really think that's the city's responsibility, but if we do half, I get it. I don't understand the city's not understanding and helping with that. I mean, I, it's up to you to figure
I can respond to that.
You can do your own budget, of course. You could figure out where do you want to spend the money or have money come in.
So as Tabia stated
Well, let me finish.
Hold on, Mayor, just for a second.
But you have a lot of money coming in because of the tourists that do go to Cocoa Beach. I know you know that. So I, I think it's just something to utilize and look at because I think we all want the same thing, no one dying. And I really, I mean, you'd have to tell me you guys don't want any more tourists in Cocoa Beach and maybe we need to look at that and work on how we're promoting Cocoa Beach. But again, that was always for you guys because, you know, with me up in North Brevard, I didn't really care if we promoted Cocoa Beach. I'd rather have it go to North Brevard. But with you saying this, it's, it's really making me think differently. So I'm, I'm listening to your words right now and it's going to really make a, might make a big change on how I am with how I promote tax dollars, so.
Okay, that's fine. So I'll address you as well. Is this okay?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah. So Tabia stated, we, we get seven point, or $3.7 million in our parking revenue as well. That parking revenue does go towards our parking garage that we paid for. It goes to taking care of our parking. It goes to our, our beach rangers. It goes to trash. It goes to all the stuff that your tourists are, are bringing to our city. The, the revenue, in my opinion, for the lifeguards has been paid for, for years and I think Steele probably could attest to this, there, you guys have budget for lifeguards. So the reason why we feel like we're not responsible for it and the residents themselves, they don't want more tourists there. Now, we know that the, the hotels and all that, it's good for them and they want it and that's fine. The residents themselves don't see a benefit other than more hotels, which that's the way the residents feel. They don't like that. But, I mean, I heard you before, you said, you know, well, if they don't want to do that, what else can we take away from them?
That's not what I said. Where else can we get the money to provide for that? Not trying to take away from you, but if, if you lose those tourism dollars, your, your, your restaurants are going to go down, you know, all those income items are going to go down. So if you're really thinking that or really want to know that, because there might be better ways for us to do tourism dollars, just, just, you know, think through that. And I get it, you're allowed to govern your own area, but those are some things we might need to make decisions on. Because the cost of banning those right now and they're, it's the city's beaches. So that's what we, we got to figure out. And Commissioner Tabia brought up early on this, we paid a whole bunch of money upfront because there were so many deaths going on to the beaches and I agreed to it too with it, to help people, people from dying. I mean, it's, I know that bothers you too. So I, I think, you know, just you think through that and figure it out because the goal is one for people not to die, but if you guys don't want any more advertising there, I mean, there's Melbourne Beach and other beaches too. I don't know. But you're just throwing out a whole new thought to me that I haven't thought through before.
All right. Let's, let's let the mayor make another comment.
It's my last.
Well, I wanted to finish what I was saying, sir.
Hold on, stop, please. Everybody just stop.
No, sir, I wanted to finish my statement.
Oh, I thought you were finished with your statement.
No, but that's what I, that's what I was finishing up with that, so.
Oh, I thought you were finished, you're not?
Okay.
You ready now? Okay, I just wanted the mayor to have a comment.
Okay.
And, and then if somebody else on the board wants to comment, this is a big issue. So let's just move forward. I apologize.
And I'm sorry as well. So 46% of all of our emergency calls are from non-residents. That equates to $5.6 million in funding that we have to come up with as well and that's attributed to non-residents. So we, we are doing our part. We are paying to take care of your tourists. We, we like to see tourists, we like to see growth. It's nice. But at the end of the day, you're driving the people here, you're advertising it. So if you want to put that money towards advertising something else in Cocoa Beach is fine and you don't want to take care of lifeguards, the thing about lifeguards, we all want them. We, we know they're, they're necessary. They're absolutely, safety is first and foremost. Our, our discussion here is, is who is responsible for it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I'm going to think through bringing a proposal to us then to find other ways to use the tourism tax dollars if that's a, a, a situation Cocoa Beach would like have. And that way we'd take a lot of that responsibility off them too with extra tourists there.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Pritchett. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate your comments. Crystal. Crystal. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Chairman Steele and distinguished Board of Commissioners. Thank you for hearing from your constituents. We do depend on this board to govern wisely and appreciate the opportunity to bring grievances to you for resolution. Although, although not generally a responsibility of this board, I'd like to formally request that this board consider action regarding the Brevard County Sheriff's Office handling of civil complaints as it directly impacts public safety when complaints are ignored. The taxpayers of Brevard County who file civil complaints of BCSO employee misconduct deserve to receive investigation findings pursuant to state law. Commissioner Feltner, I hereby implore you to compel the staff services and internal affairs of BCSO to fully investigate these three civil complaints against Corporal Mike Williams, SRO of Vieira High School. Unfortunately, two of these complaints dated 1/31/24 have yet to be resolved and the misconduct has escalated. I do have copies of these civil complaints for your reference. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Thank you very much. Rick? Come on back up.
Rick Heffelfinger, 2000s, Juniper Drive, District 1. I use this public comment as kind of just to review what happened in the meeting. There seems to be a common trend. Maybe Public Works doesn't answer questions? How do we get questions out of Public Works? The trees along the, that they're going to cut down? Public Works is doing maps. People thought that they had the tree situation solved. Now they're doing maps. We're still cutting trees. We don't know. Where do we get information from our county? I know you don't answer questions, so, but I'd like to know who does. Interesting pedestrian safety came up a couple of times.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Yes, sir.
BCC 97, Section 3G1.
Can you stop my time, please?
Yes, sir.
I think we should stop it altogether. The purpose of public comment is to allow individuals to comment on any topic relating to county business which is not on the meeting agenda. So my suggestion would be to follow board policy and provide Mr. Heffelfinger with time to discuss anything that has not already been discussed as BCC 97, Section 3G1 states.
I'm summarizing the meeting. Can I not do that?
Not according to Section BCC, Section 97, 3G1.
Are you familiar with the term shenanigans? There was a bunch of people out front earlier. Can I talk about the people out front? That's not earlier in the meeting.
All right, we're not, we're not going to get into an adversarial position tonight, Rick.
I didn't start it.
Okay, well, we're going to end it. So just continue on with what you were saying and, and try to stay on, on what's happened tonight that didn't happen tonight on your public comments. So if you would go forward, if not, I'll ask the, the county attorney for Robert's Rule of Order, point of order.
Okay. The, the topic did come up about pedestrian safety, about some sidewalks that I didn't review that one. That one's not my district. I, I'm concerned that when I finally get my public records request, where was the public concern for the intersection of Friday Road and James? I know we turned over James Road, closed the permit. Where was the assessment for safety down there? 438 some homes dumping onto one intersection. Did we do that? I hope it's in my public records. This is, doesn't have any, the term briefing was mentioned tonight. Do you guys get a briefing? Do you get a briefing from the county before the meeting?
I'm not answering that question. I will answer that question.
Is that open to the public?
No, no, stop.
Okay.
As the chairman of this county commission, I go before the whole count, the whole agenda and we go over the agenda so that I have a complete understanding of what's going to be at the meeting. That's all I'm going to tell you we do. This is an interior thing for me as the chairman. Now you go ahead.
That, it's open to the public, though.
That is not open to the public.
What about sunshine rules? Do they not apply? Is it just for you?
Look, don't, don't stop, don't start, okay?
I'm not, I'm just asking questions.
Well, you, you know better than to ask questions during public comment. So let's stop this nonsense and move forward. You can laugh all you want, it's fine, but we're not going to do this or I'm going to sit you down. Okay? Go ahead with your comments, please. You got a minute and three seconds left.
I just, I, I wonder, a lot of people, the commonality seems to be that a lot of people are, have voiced their concerns and nobody's listening, nobody's answering. Do we have, do we have something in the, in the policy about who the vice vice chair is? That is official, is that an official recognized position? Can I, I can ask a question, I know you won't answer. How much staff time was spent to make that presentation? Some people seem to be very concerned about staff time and improper use. Don't we have the ability to recognize employees up at the beginning on the agenda? Why are we using? I, that's just an observation. Again, I'm not asking any questions because I know what the policy is. It just seems like that was a lot of time spent and you got people waiting to make public comment. There's a lot of important things going on, but we want to talk about, you know, all that other.
Rick, I suggest that you pull your papers and run for county commission and then you'll have every opportunity in the world to sit up here and do whatever you want.
I'd rather try to hold five people accountable than be one vote.
Well, that's okay. Sandra Sullivan.
Good evening, Sandra Sullivan. So a lot of what I do is a lot to do with accountability and transparency. Those have been key theme of me coming to these meetings for years. And so I wasn't very happy last year when the budget workshop under board reports, a vote was taken to postpone it, but really what you meant was cancel it. So we have the meeting this year and lo and behold, you know, I did records requests last year to get it and information is missing from the presentations this year and we weren't allowed to speak under the agenda items. And you guys took a vote under one of those, which there was an article recently that when you take a vote, the public's allowed to weigh in. Well, that kind of brings up the Merritt Island shenanigans, right? Where a vote was taken under public comment with no public being able to weigh in and a vote taken on the feasibility study before the vote, the people weighed in. I'm very frustrated with the shenanigans that have been going on, on so many items with this particular board. I've not seen anything like it in five years. So let's talk about impact fees. Your, this, this one is not updated. 799 million, $699 million deficit on transportation. You've added a lot of transportation roads that are at capacity. We don't have a new number in the budget that was presented. We do know from last year, these dark lines are what is funded and the rest is unfunded. We don't have a source for that. So Mr. Bernath spoke up and he said, if we use all the funding sources we have available, it's going to take us 20 to 25 years to catch up. I was blown away. And then we have two commissioners who say, well, we don't want to make the decision while we're in office until we're out of office. Let the next commissioners do it. Let's kick the can down the road further when we're already in a fiscal crisis here. So here are the, the funding options that were in last year's budget, but not in this year's budget. So what are those options? One of them is an infrastructure surtax. Well, I brought before you a attorney general's legal opinion, you can't have two half-cent sales taxes. We have the lagoon tax and the school board tax and they both sunset in 2026. And so you're talking about bringing the lagoon tax forward. Well, maybe we should be talking about having a one-cent sales tax, no increase, getting rid of the school board tax because that's not a critical need anymore. We have a critical need for transportation. And the other one was impact fees. And from your budget workshop a few years ago, the transportation is 4353 and hasn't been updated since 2001. Wake up. Paving was up 27.7% just in the last year. That's a fiscal accountability.
Katie. Bring your flag up. Go ahead.
I'll wait. All right. Katie Delaney, I am a candidate running for county commission in District 1 and I got to say, I, I'm frustrated. And I got to say, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated, especially after watching that budget workshop, when two of the commissioners said that we're not going to touch these fiscal issues this year and let's wait for the next commission. These are two of the longest-standing commissioners on this board. So what, these fiscal problems just came up this year? We -- it's a new problem? I don't think that's true. Some people were talking about shenanigans tonight, and it's what we see. And there were people here tonight that were obviously passionate about their problem, about the things that they care about in their community. The trees on Rockledge Drive, the people who live in West Melbourne, they obviously cared about that. And I will say, as somebody sitting in the audience, the lack of care that people felt out there was -- Your whole job, and hopefully my job, will be to serve the public and to make sure that the people up here are working, making sure the people over there and over there are not overstepping their bounds. Why are we still fighting about the trees on River Road? I want to move on to the fire negotiations. I was lucky enough to be at the negotiations last week or two weeks ago. For some reason, I was told that usually the county has somebody doing the negotiations, the lawyer. Is it true that we're outsourcing that this time and paying them over $400 an hour? That's a little confusing. They're not able to talk about wages. The whole reason why they're there is to talk about wages. And there's a few things that other fire departments across the state do and across the country do. One of them is Kelly Days. Making sure that these firefighters have a day off, and not just firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, anyone who works for them, have these days off on a regular basis so they could go and, you know, doctor's appointments, whatever, whatever they have to do. We're done with the shenanigans. We really, really, really need you guys to bring some professionalism back to this. Thank you.
Kristin Lorti.
Kristin Lorti, Cocoa resident, moderator of the Brevard Cares Citizens Coalition on Facebook, and a supporter of the Stop the Shenanigans rally that occurred just before the meeting today, our very first rally. And people have some things on their mind, and I -- many things have been covered already tonight, but there's a few that I would personally like to cover. I have gotten myself more organized. I've been following you guys off and on for a couple of years. I have my new binder, Stop the Shenanigans binder. So I'm keeping good track, good records, as best I can to stay organized. And what I'd like to do is put on record the -- on the workshop, the 229 workshop, where I was denied the opportunity to comment before Commissioner Tobaya's motion went through. And I felt that was an excellent example of the subverting public input, number one bullet point here. Thank you for helper on my items here. Won't be able to go cover all of them, but subverting public input and voting on non-agenda items, actions against the public input interest. You did -- covered all three. And you know what you end up with? A mess. Now we have the mayor from Cocoa Beach, and if you want to hear more, just start at minute 56 of the Cocoa Beach last meeting to hear more about what Cocoa Beach thought about the shenanigans that occurred at that meeting. But I find it deeply troubling. I think this is solvable stuff if you just have the right people in the room at the right time and before you make the vote. So I brought -- I've got my three denied speaker cards. First one is around the lifeguards, two other agenda items that your agenda said that I'd be able to speak to, that is subverting the public process. So, and I have decided that we have arrived at the fashion show stage. Remember the Florida Today comment? We're here now. We're here now. We've got a binder, we've got a fashion show, we've got whiteboard, which I bought after the 2-6 meeting. So we're getting all prepared here on the citizen side. So I want to make sure that I say that at the meeting about the agenda item that I object to having been taken, the vote being taken. I object to my car being denied. I did correspond with the attorney in email, and you've all been copied on that back-and-forth correspondence because I spent Saturday writing back on that, and objecting to his opinion on Florida statute 286.01142, sub point two, because the end of the day, he says I can come back in September when we do the public hearings in order for my points to be taken. So I object to that. And then, I just have a few moments left, but I would like to make a mention of the public records, of the barriers to public records. So I've currently had about email 12 of attempting to read a binder, to read a binder, the speak-up of our citizens binder, and I'm going to have to pay $34.85 an hour to be babysat by the county attorney's office. And they've sent me the policy, we're 12 emails in. I object. I object. Access to public records. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kristin. Sarah Hodge. Like or tie?
I'm Sarah Hodge, and I live at 390 Sanders Lane, Merritt Island. I'm here about the cost of public records. If you remember, some of you might, that many years ago, the Florida Today wanted records from the school board. They -- school board told them it would be $30,000. Well, they paid it so they could get those records, and then they turned around and sued the school board. School board lost big time, and they had to pay the fees for the Florida Today, plus the citizens had to pay for the school board fees or for our county taxes. The fees are getting out of hand for cities and county. The records needed to be put on the internet, just like the clerk's office did, the public records. And I think that's something you really need to do. And that way, there won't be a babysitter for $35 an hour. You don't have to worry about anything, and it's costing you to do, you know, the records the way they are now. So I'm here to ask you to please put them on the internet. And thank you. And I've, you know, this delay on getting records, that's ridiculous. They know where they are, they can get them immediately, and they don't do it. That's not right. And this is a First Amendment right that we have, you know? We have access to our public records, and you can't deny it. And if you keep doing it, you're going to have a lot of opposition, and it's not going to help. And there's a lot of people that are very upset because they can't afford the records. So they can't prove their cases. And you need to acknowledge that people are losing their houses because they can't afford the new taxes and their new insurance fees. So you need to look at your -- this is a public thing that you have to do. You have to be able to get records at a reasonable cost or put them on the internet. And people aren't going to keep putting up with it. I guarantee it. You'll see it. Thank you.
What is your last name, sir?
Feng.
Feng?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You're up, sir.
Hello. Yeah, I'm here to talk about the Hoover Middle School Lights Project. Lived in Indian Atlantic for over 30 years, and my parents also still live there. Mr. Steele, you're very aware of the concerns in the comments, I think, about this, right? About this project? Okay? Guess not. But yeah, we've contacted you before, and you said that they were adequately addressed by the county, the comments and the concerns, but I'm here today because they were not. There is light pollution that was created from this, even though the engineering studies said that there would be zero lumen light spillage. As you know, Mr. Steele, I'm a licensed professional engineer for the state of Florida, that I tried to communicate that to you as well. With all of these concerns, I invited you to come out to see the issues in person for these large structures placed behind our homes. Who would like super-large, 90-foot light poles installed right behind your homes that could fall, that are large enough that they could actually fall under an extreme storm event? None of you. All of our neighbors at River Oaks and Franklin feel the same, everyone I've talked to. Some of the issues you said that were addressed were simply just dismissed, like the fall radius analysis on the home. They're placed -- the poles are placed so close that they could fall. That's number one. Inspection and maintenance of the light fixtures themselves that can become flying projectiles. Property value studies that were sent to the county based on cell phone towers that are placed behind homes that decrease the value of the property values of homes, and that's what's happening in this case. The other comment that was not addressed was public notice and the avoidance of the issue altogether. Population growth and the demand of Indian Atlantic, there is none, not very big demand. All the lights were on, just as we expected. There's nobody using the field at night. Pictures and video to show that, the light pollution as well. And what I ask is a response and a resolution to this. We've simply been ignored.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Stephen Snooks. I was the 2022 candidate mayor for Cape Canaveral, Florida. I only got 20 votes, so didn't win, but still trying to do my duty to keep the community safe. It's come to my knowledge that -- you haven't started the time for one, but two -- jokes. It's come to my knowledge that the Parks and Recreation have a slight issue that I'm trying to contend with. I've called Parks and Recreation, spoke with the supervisor. They've stated that there are 20 parks in Brevard County that kind of wrap up the same argument. I was on my way from Cape Canaveral to Merritt Island area, stopping along Kelly Park on 528. Went to charge my cellphone. Went through every outlet in the park. Wasn't one single outlet that worked. I thought it was a maintenance issue. So I called Parks and Recreation, directed towards maintenance, said, hey, you have some outlets that need to be looked at. They told me that it was not an outlet issue, it was a power during a time issue. So I went into more in-depth about what this time was. They said that the time would be shut off after park hours, and I said, well, that's interesting because I was there during park hours, which is how I got access to the park. We're all taxpayers here. We pay property tax, sales tax, income tax. All that funds Brevard County's Parks and Recreations. So to get access, I was told, to any electricity at any point in time of day, I have to reserve a pavilion for X amount of dollars to guarantee that allotment of energy and time during any point in day. That's if you're on the fly, if you're just on the go, there's no time to schedule anything like that. So it seems to me there is an oversight, an overreach in policy within the council to mandate people have a pavilion registered to them for any point in time for electricity. And this overreaches into public safety. I feel that extremely valuable parks right on the water, people might be out recreationing, motorboating, jet skiing. The cell phones are having difficulty connecting to their cell phones. It's taxing their battery. It's really trying to find a signal. So their battery's going to run down quickly. When they get back in the port, they might not have any energy left by the end of time that they get back. This could be a problem if there was an issue out there at sea. Somebody needed to emergency, if they didn't have a radio for whatever reason, phone was their only thing, their phone was not being able to charge. Of course, you go to the port, you pull in, you turn your phone, if it's off, you plug it in, and you turn it on at 1%, try to make an emergency call. That is not something that is currently possible, and I believe that is a public safety across all of Brevard County, 30 parks that do not have access to electricity during the normal hours of operation. Thank you very much.
Could I say something on that?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. Sir, your point's well taken. I would tell you that in the future, actually today, it is very easy to charge a cellphone with a solar panel. Everybody knows that I have given many of those away for Christmas and birthdays and that kind of thing, just to prove the point. I envision a time in the future where maybe just a panel is in a park, and it's as simple as it has a few USB ports. I mean, you can't walk up and, you know, put your tongue on it and get electrocuted or anything. It doesn't make enough to do that, but it would make enough to charge your cellphone. Chief back there is smiling at me. He knows I went out to look at the new lifeguard towers, and the new ones are pretty neat in that they're easily moved. Anyways, talked to a young lieutenant out there, and they don't have power, and I said, I'm going to have to get you a solar panel so you can at least charge your phone. So anyways, I'm mindful of those things. Your point's well taken. Thank you for your comment.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, sir. Quick, just a quick comment. The items that we voted on even in the workshop, which it was a workshop, county attorney, they're still going to come between two more public hearings to finalize those items we talked about, correct, sir? We still have two more opportunities for public comment?
In reality, more than that, Commissioner. In fact, the specific item that was addressed at the workshop, the board had taken consistent action in agendized items by vote, not once but twice in 2023, where there was opportunity for public comment on the specific item. At the workshop, there was direction to staff in preparing the budget. As you pointed out, the budget will come back a minimum of two times for public hearings in August and September pursuant to statutory requirements. Other items that were discussed relating to things like grant, things like that, that'll all come back to the board for official action, and that's when comment will be required on those items.
Okay, good. I just thought that would be a good clarification. There's still two opportunities for, at least, for public comment on those items before they're finalized in the budget. Another thing, just, I know we've done this for years. Commissioners are able to bring items that aren't on the agenda to the commission. I mean, it's what we do. You have to have discussion. And so county attorney, that is correct. We're allowed to do that and make votes. I mean, it's not illegal for us to do that.
It's not. You can bring items. Generally in board reports, it's of a ministerial nature. It's only if you take an official action that then some public comment is required on that action.
Have to be advertised.
Well, you can raise issues at a meeting that might require comment at that meeting, depending on the nature of the issue and whether it's official action or not.
Okay, so if you -- I think we discussed this before. We -- a couple of things we've stopped. We decided we needed more time, and we want it more time before we take votes. So it's not something I think that typically is, we practice, but it could be an opportunity. It could happen sometimes, and it's not necessarily inappropriate. But again, that item we did vote on in the budget meeting still has to go through a few more clarifications before it gets there as being part of the budget. So there still is opportunity for public comment, and just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. The motion on the floor by Commissioner Feltnor to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Goodson, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you very much.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.